Good evening and welcome to a regular member of the Oak Harbor City Council. It is Tuesday, May 16th. As usual, I'll call the meeting to order. We'll first start off with an invocation led by Pastor Randy Boomer. I hope I said that right. Oak Harbor Christian Reformed Church. And then you can stand to join us for that. And we'll follow that with me leading the Pledge of Allegiance. Randy?
Please pray with me. Father in heaven, we stand before you at all times and in all places. We also count our blessings, Lord, the many blessings that we have as a city. This beautiful place to live, the wonderful people that are here, the many things that the city provides, the support of fire departments, police departments, EMTs, education. Lord, we lift all these things to you and thank you for those many blessings. We thank you for city workers who dig ditches and pay bills. And we thank you for the city council tonight. We ask, Lord, that you would please direct, please shepherd and guide decisions that are made. And Lord, we also as a nation want to lift our nation to you. We see many things that divide us. Oftentimes, we see people digging in their heels over issues. Lord, we are a diverse nation, many people with many different ideas and backgrounds. But, Lord, we pray that you would heal our land and bring unity to us under your wisdom, under your shepherding hand. We ask this in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Randy, and please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under Gauda, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, looks like we have a full council tonight. And I would, item number one is our agenda. And so how would the council like to, any changes to the agenda?
I move, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Campbell, second by Counselor Muntz to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're moving to section two. And we do have a recognition tonight under our honors and recognition section. We have an employee recognition for Sergeant Sir Lloyd Carter. And I see our Police Chief Dresker here at the podium. Chief?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. So I have the honor today to, and the mayor does, I believe, to recognize Lloyd Carter for 10 years of service with Oak Harbor Police Department. And I was asking him today, because of course he's been here a lot longer than I am, how long he's been a sergeant. And he says going on four years. So I told him he's still on super secret probation. He's not actually, but I told him that. And I'm gonna introduce Lloyd, and then I'm gonna let him introduce his family. He's got some family members here today.
Great.
Lloyd?
Good evening, everyone. Like Chief, you guys all know, I've been here for 10 years now. Actually, I first came up here back in 1984 when I went into the Navy. That's where I met my wife, Robin, who's here. Her father, Jack, and her mother, Betty, is here as well with us. And she also brought her sister, Celine. They all came out tonight for this. That's when I met her, we got married, had three wonderful kids, and they're all off doing their thing in the world. When I retired from the Navy, we decided to come back up, back up here in 2007 and been here ever since, having a great time, working here at the police department. So, that's all the speech I'm gonna give.
Well, and I wanna, just before we finish up or continue on, I wanna, Lloyd is our firearms, in charge of our firearms program. He also helps us out with the fleet. He's supervising our fleet and repairs and different things we need to do. He also takes care of some Coban stuff for us. And boy, I think there's probably like five or six other things that he's responsible for. But he does, he takes on a lot of responsibility and a lot of tasks for the department, so it's very much appreciated. And a lot of it is just extra duties that he, he said, "I can do it." And so it's very appreciated. So, and we have a fleece and a pin to present to Lloyd. So am I doing that?
Yes.
All right.
Chief.
So Lloyd, in recognition of your 10 years of service, there's a fleece and a 10-year pin. Thank you very much.
Yes, Counsel, yes, Counselor Hyacinth.
Just really quick, I forgot you were gonna be here tonight, so it's fortuitous that you are. I was literally this afternoon looking at some information from HR, and it had, you know, the date, the hire dates of a bunch of people. And I thought, Carter's only been here 10 years? Because it's hard to remember a time when you weren't, if that makes sense. And not in a bad way, but I think that's a testament to the way that you've just kind of, you and your family, woven yourselves into the fabric of the community. And I was surprised to see it had only been 10 years. So, I don't know how fast or slowly that's gone by for you, but thank you.
Well, actually, for me, it seemed like it came by pretty quick.
Thank you for all you do.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Counsel?
We can go shake hands.
Yes, we'll take a moment here, and we'll just pause the council meeting, come down, Like to also, like to also say, it's nice to see the support from the people across the street. Thanks, thanks for coming. We appreciate you guys and gals, day and night, believe me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll come back in session. Citizen comment period. Citizens may comment on subjects of interest not listed on the agenda or items listed on the consent agenda at this time. To ensure comments are recorded properly, please state your name clearly into the microphone. Please limit your comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. And I see we have one signed up here. Hal Hubby. Hal?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for letting me talk today. I want to talk briefly about something that came up at the city council workshop on the 26th of April. The discussion about the proposed or planned work at Regatta and Crescent Harbor Road, the intersection there. I understand that as part of that reconstruction of that intersection, according to the county's engineer at H2 Engineering, the retaining wall that's gonna be put along the west side of Regatta is gonna be 10 to 11 feet tall, and as near as I could tell from the diagrams that were presented, maybe several hundred feet long. Of course, it's not all gonna be 11 feet tall, it'll be several hundred feet long, but it's gonna be big. Mr. Servadius at the meeting mentioned that, you know, or asked, I guess, if the wall is gonna be similar to what's outside the Walmart across from the Safeway on Erie Street. And it sounded like it's gonna be pretty similar if nothing is done to remediate the eyesore that that giant wall is. If you've been to any cities like Phoenix or Las Vegas that have a lot of new highway construction, federally funded highway construction, you can see that there are some really great ideas out there for decorating retaining walls and noise walls. And I've taken the liberty of handing out some pictures, which I just pulled off of Google, that show you some of the things that have been done around the country to help make them a little bit prettier. And I know some discussion went on at that meeting about maybe having some forms brought in that would mold the concrete, similar to what they did down when they built Skagit College with the, you know, the wood look cement. So anything that can be done to mitigate the potential for that becoming a graffiti magnet or, you know, subject to vandalism, and really eliminating the eyesore that it's gonna become otherwise, would be appreciated. And I understand from Mr. Stoll that because the county is the lead agent on this project, we really don't have much input. However, I'm hoping that maybe the city council members and the mayor could do some arm twisting with the county commissioners and county staff, and maybe get them to find some funds to make that look a little bit better than just a giant 11-foot concrete wall. If I have time left, the second issue I'd like to address was brought up by Mayor Severn at the May 2nd city council meeting, and that is the mayor's affordable housing plan, which Mr. Servadius and Mrs. Wassinger are working with him on. I also know that it's, that affordable housing is the number one priority for the Oak Harbor Chamber of Commerce. And I'd really like to encourage the city, as you're getting into your planning for how to mitigate some of the housing problems here, you know, maybe it's time to declare a housing emergency and look at significantly reducing or even eliminating the cost of permits and impact fees for a time being, particularly for infill residential lots. You know, when a homeowner owns a lot next to him that's vacant, it's very difficult for him to find the funds when he's gotta come up with a lot of money upfront to build on it. And we're gonna really limit the infill construction until something is done to help them out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hubby. A couple of great ideas. Appreciate that very much. Other citizen comment? Any, anybody else like to comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to our consent agenda. Item number four, or I mean, section four, I should say. We have consent agenda items number A through E. Anyone seeing no? Okay, seeing that they will be approved as presented. And we are now into the section for the mayor comments. Want to again remind you that the National Public Works Week is May 21st to May 27th, and there will be an Oak Harbor Public Works event, Family Fun Day, on May 20th. That'll kinda kick that week off. Join us for a day of family activ, friendly activities, family-friendly activities, celebrating Oak Harbor Public Works, the future Clean Water Facility, and Windjammer Park. So that'll be held on May 20th. I believe that's a Saturday from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at Windjammer Park. I believe, I heard at a meeting this last week that last year it rained, this year it won't. So last year, we had 300, or plus, around 300 people, young people at that event. So with no rain this year, we might double that. So, May 20th, 10 until 2:00, Family Fun Day. Also wanted to point out, I get the SAR reports from the NAS Woodby. I think I've mentioned on several occasions that I meet monthly with the commanding officer. I just like to, like to report that they had another search and rescue team from NAS Woodby that conducted a rescue mission on Sunday, May 7th, in the mountainous area near Okanagan Forest. They were able to assist. The, the Shalan County had a, had a copter that couldn't get in there, and our people from SAR made that happen. This was the sixth rescue for 2017 for NAS Woodby Island SAR, which has also conducted four searches and 13 medevacs missions for this year. So, pretty darn valuable resource out there that our neighbors are doing. Just wanna point that out. So, that concludes my comments, so we'll look to the council now. Anybody, council got any comments? Yes, Counselor Muntz.
Thank you, Mayor. This July, as you all know, usually is Christmas in July for Help House. And it's a way to keep their doors open, to feed everyone in our community that needs a little help. But this year's their 40th anniversary, so look for like 40 days of Christmas and different things in the paper, either the Woodby Weekly or Woodby News Times. But it's a special occasion to make 40 years, and it was started by the community. I mean, it wasn't, it's not a government program. It is a community program that was started here because there was a need. And in April, the doors opened, this past April, to Island Thrift, that is also 40 years old. So there's two wonderful, community-started services in, in our community that I just want you to be sure and be aware of and recognize. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other, yes, Counselor Servadius?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things, Mr. Hubby. I appreciate the comment. You're right, we don't, we're not funding necessarily the wall up front, but as I sit here and look at this picture, I was reminded of something, and maybe Dr. Merriman of the mayor, we could strike up a conversation with the Arts Commission? When you look, one of the pictures, the public can't see this, but there's a picture of some, it looks like geese taking off in a chevron pattern. And right next to that, there's some salmon, looks like they're cut out of steel or maybe stainless steel. And I've seen, I think it's on 405, down near Bellevue, there's some stainless steel salmon. And it might be something that after the fact, even if it's a plain wall, that the Arts Commission might be made aware of this, and it's something where we could do something that's cut out of metal, whether it's a combination of some salmon on one end, this chevron of geese, it's actually very attractive. It looks like they're made out of the cement, but I appreciate those, those comments. I want to give a brief update on the housing work of this project that I'm working on. First of all, Mayor, once again, thank you for the, I guess, authority or appointing me to work on that and making it a focus and a priority. I also want to thank staff. I've called on a couple of them already to, for their help in to answer some questions. The last two weeks really have just been kind of a listening tour, trying to talk to developers, get a better handle on our processes. And my goal really, and I, I think we'll probably be talking probably weekly, Mayor, but, and trying to help the mayor on his economic development, it's really twofold. The first is infill, as Mr. Hubby also mentioned. That's something that I'm passionate about, is trying to increase density and, and figure out ways to increase our infill, while at the same time acknowledging that that's maybe not going as fast or we're working as well as, as we would like as a city when you look at the number of permits that we issue. Some of the statistics that I've seen or read state that there's up to 2,000, maybe 2,500 people that are displaced off island that work on island. And a lot of that is on the base. And so the work that I'll be doing is to really find not only a solution possibly to help the mayor with infill, but also look at what are our other options as far as other expansion areas to help meet that need. I was in a meeting recently with Dr. Gibbon, and he stated something so eloquently, I'm a big fan of numbers, but he was talking about some of the district's needs. And the statistic he stated was that if a person commutes one hour each day, so that's two hours a day, if they're coming from Sidro or Mount Vernon, and they do that for 200 days out of the year, that equates to 400 hours. Well, what does that mean? Well, that's 10 average work weeks. So 10 average work weeks, two and a half months that a person spends just in transit to come here and work. So, you know, that could be a mom that's spending two and a half months extra working, volunteering with the schools, or just spending time with their family. It could be a dad spending an extra two and a half months, wants to get volunteering in the schools, or working for youth sports, or doing something like that. So it's, it's a very significant number, not to mention all the environmental impacts of all that traffic. So, you know, I think we've got an obligation to continue to look at this, and I appreciate the mayor's focus on this as far as economic development and solving this need. At the moment, I can report that Island County is currently looking at their comprehensive plan and revisions to their countywide planning policies. And I just wanna make sure, and I know the mayor feels the same way, that we're proactive in working with them. Mr. Hubby mentioned, it was interesting, I, we hadn't talked about this, but he said something about a housing emergency. And while this isn't an emergent issue, we've talked about it for years now, since the past administration, it's definitely becoming a very urgent issue. And so once again, Mayor, I just appreciate your commitment in trying to find a solution on this and happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Watson?
Something I forgot to mention last council meeting, and kind of along the lines of housing and development, back in April, on April 22nd, the fire department, our fire department, along with the Navy and North Woodby Fire, was able to participate in a training burn. And I was able to participate as well, and I thank Chief Merrill for allowing me to participate in that. And this came about because the Maron family is developing a new neighborhood off of Swan Town, and on the lot was an older home that needed to be moved out of the way or taken down to make way for the road and, and the new neighborhood. And now this is maybe a small dent, but I think a significant dent in our housing needs. You know, it'll be 40-plus homes when it's completed, but I would like to thank the Maron family and the fire department for donating this house to use as a training burn to, to make way for this new development. So thank you, Chief. It was an honor, and I learned so much, learned the value of our firemen and the hard work that they put in. And it, it was truly a learning experience for me. So thank you for allowing me to participate, and thank you to the Maron family and the city for allowing that, that program to take place. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes council comments, so we will move on to the city administrator. Dr. Merriman?
All right, thank you, Mayor. I think I'm gonna join in on the art discussion for a quick second to give you a quick update. I appreciate Mr. Hubby bringing the topic forward, and there's some really interesting ideas on this printout here. The last Arts Commission meeting, which was probably a week or two ago, the topic came up of this very wall on the west end of Crescent Harbor Road there, and what things could we do on that? Kat Kamak, who you know is our senior planner that is in Development Services Department, is a liaison on that committee. And he and I chatted about their discussion. And as of, I think it was yesterday, we sent off an inquiry to the county to see what we can start doing to give input into putting art on that wall. So we've already started that initial process on that, and we'll get that moving. It doesn't hurt to have council and people give that feedback to the county as well when we do that and see if we can get something going. But that will also open up some options for the city possibly to participate in that through our Arts Commission. So that's just a quick update on that one. A couple other things we have going on, we'll do our Clean Water Facility update, and we also have Jeff and Jared from Orswell and FIS here tonight to talk about the marathon. But first, you'll notice I don't have my report on here tonight. And probably Friday or the first part of this next week, we're gonna have the new revised report that comes out. It's been revamped and has a lot more information on it. It's the lower part of the iceberg that we talked about, so we'll be sharing a lot more of that information, so stay tuned. You'll see that coming out here soon. So, that's what I have for my report. I'll go ahead and hand this off to Brett to give you an update on the Clean Water Facility.
Good afternoon here for our Clean Water Facility update. The old Wells Fargo parking lot has become a hotbed of activity lately. We're digging it up. You might recall, last time, we were talking about starting pile driving. Well, we had two and a half weeks planned to do that, and we actually got it done in a week, so it went very quickly and very smoothly. What happens, we drive these piles in, and then we start digging, and we put these, we call legging bars, or big timbers behind it, that's the shoring system for the hole. And as we, as we go down, we put more of them in there. These guys are down about two-thirds of the way down, so they're going down another four feet from that elevation there. So, it's kinda interesting, and they're as they dig it down. But that's gonna be a busy place for the rest of the summer. Design-wise, we're due 60% Windjammer plans in late June. We're working hard on that right now. We continue to work on our Skagit software development. And while we're talking about Arts Commission, if you might recall, a couple meetings back that Therese Kingsbury came and requested that, you know, maybe they could get in touch with us. So Joe and I did present to the Arts Commission on the project. They have established a subcommittee to work with our design team on ideas for Windjammer Park, hoping to come back with a programming document that we can present up to the full committee, then on the city council. So hopefully we have some cool ideas coming out of that. Our design team is pretty excited about it. We've had several ideas as we work through it. It's nice to have them have. Construction-wise, we're pouring concrete, we're coming to the, coming out of the ground. We're hoping by the end of the month to finish all the flat slabs. Remains ahead of schedule and below our labor estimates. We are backfilling around structures. We're doing what we call the most critical, what you call the nine line. That's almost complete. We're starting to see as much conduit on site as rebar, so we're starting to transition into very heavy mechanical, electrical activities. We're starting to do more architectural activities. Like I said earlier, we've completed the utility locations and the pile driving. Interesting factoid that I got today at our construction meeting is, right now, we have 75 construction workers on site. The parking lot behind Pioneer Automotive is getting very full, and we're anticipating going to 90 next month, and we're probably peaking at 120 by the end of the summer. Again, the parking lot is closed, and I'm probably gonna take this slide off. So far, people have seemed to have been adapting it pretty well. Again, you can get to our site now from the back door coming in from Pioneer Auto. Funding-wise, there's nothing new on that. We're still waiting at legislative approval. We are pursuing Windjammer Park funding activities. As the mayor stole my thunder, is, we do have Family Fun Day planned for Saturday, May 20th, from 10:00 to 2:00. Kid-friendly activities, but we'd also talk to a lot of parents. And last year, we, with the bad weather, we had a lot of people. We're hoping to have a lot more. And of course, we haven't got any major help dates, but you're more than welcome to come down and visit us. Schedule-wise, we just reviewed Oak Harbor 30, and we're pretty much on schedule. We are starting to see, it's interesting, the structural work is starting to get ahead of itself, and the critical path is shifting to the mechanical, electrical work. So, a mechanical contractor was complaining about schedule compression, but we're seeing to be getting that resolved. Want to get more information on the project, you can always reach us at oakcarborcleantwater.org. You can call us at (914) 7,000, or our business extensions. Email us at treatmentplant@oakcarbor.org. And our next open house is May 22nd, or actually, you can come by and visit us by appointment. Any questions?
Any questions, counsel? Okay, nice report. Brett?
Thank you.
I think next on our agenda is Orson Events?
And next up, we have a report on the Woodby Island Marathon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jeff Orswell with Orswell Events, and this is Jared Lawnger with FIS Events. We are pleased to give you a kind of a post-event recap and, and quick debrief on this year's Woodby Island Marathon. The event was a tremendous success in our opinion. We, you'll see, we got lots of positive feedback, and we really enjoyed working on this event this year. We're very pleased with the, the participation numbers. As you can see, we're looking at a 36% increase year over year. Across the top with those pie charts, no real surprises, but notable that, again, 60% of our participation was in the half marathon distance. 65% of our participants are female. Again, as I've reported to you in the past, that's pretty standard with running races like this. And one we're most proud of, I think, is the 58% of participants coming from greater than 50 miles away from Oak Harbor, really, I think, accomplishing the goal of bringing new people to the area and exposing them to the beauties of Woodby Island. We did see significant increase in our shorter distance runs, as you can see, in the, in the 10K and the 5K, but the, the 24% increase in the half marathon is very encouraging and, again, continues to be kind of the mainstay part of, of this weekend event. I'm gonna let Jared kinda run through some of the social media responses we received almost immediately.
Yeah, so as Jeff mentioned, you did see that some of the bigger growth, growth numbers are from those 5Ks and 10Ks, which helps show there are people coming from a short distance as well. Those are more family-friendly distances. They're more for the husband, wives, and, and the sons and daughters. As Jeff mentioned, in kind of the electronic world, it's really easy to get feedback, no matter good or bad. And this- matter good or bad, and this shows currently, we use Facebook as a good barometer. It's a great place to advertise as of lately as well. If you look in the upper right-hand corner, our overall Facebook ratings, 4.7 out of five stars, which is very, very good in the running world. I see she's laughing currently. I'm guessing she's reading the bottom right response. And that 4.7 actually is a little misleading. The only single one star we've ever received was actually from 2015, so it's been a couple of years, but it doesn't go away. Otherwise, it'd be a little higher. And we just pulled some of the actual comments from people who rated the race this year based on what we saw. The bottom left is a great one that shows, hey, my nine-year-old son and I had a great time running the 5K. It proves they brought a family out to the event. The bottom right there was somebody who had a lot to say about the hills in Oak Harbor and Whidby Island, but I think in the middle of that, I used that one. It's one of my favorites because they ended by saying, "I'll be back next year, though." And all these had great things to say. Either it's hilly, but it's very scenic, and we've done the race before, and we will continue to do it again, or this was my first half, and I'm excited to try and do better next year. So, we got a lot of great feedback, actually, and these mainly cover the race course, but we heard everything from the expo was great to the cheering was great, the support was great after the race, and we had a great time, all the way down to the weather was perfect, running conditions for the majority of the race there. And I think we wanted to touch base on what some of the reasons we thought that was. Part of it was our marketing efforts, some of it was the event sponsors, and one of the things we just tried to show here with the shirt, with the bib, with the medal, and then finally with the thank you newsletter that, or excuse me, print that went out in the Whidby Weekly. We went with the theme of Run the Bridge this year, and it was something that's very iconic, obviously, to Whidby Island and Oak Harbor, and it's what we think helped draw people to the race itself to see some of those increases. But again, the marketing efforts there, it covers a lot of what we did in Whidby Weekly, which was 12 different quarter-page ads. We had the front cover one week. We had the thank you ad that you can see right there in the bottom. We increased our Facebook presence, which helped, I think, garner more people from a lot of different areas. Jeff actually, at Orswell Events, has a 50,000-person race database from across the Northwest that touches all the way down to Portland, east of the mountains and up throughout Canada that we sent 11, 12 different promotional emails to that got a great response. We're partners in the Salish Seas Running Series, which is four different marathons here across the Northwest that help promote our race, but we also help promote theirs. It gets them discounts across the Northwest here. And then we also advertised, which was new in Race Center Northwest, which touches all the way through Portland and all the way down to Bend, all the way up to Canada as well. So, we saw a great response from that. We had great event sponsors this year with Brandonman University actually stepping up this year. They were our photo sponsor, which if I can find it, if you see on both photos there, they actually were tagged across that bottom of every participant photo. Participant photos were free. If you participated in the race, you were sent an email with your actual pictures tagged, and Brandonman was part of that. They got great exposure from a video clip beforehand, a little bit of blurb before the race. And then we also had great partners from Whidby Weekly. Pencov Brewing was there doing the beer garden afterwards. Windermere, Whidby Weekly, as I mentioned, looks like I rode them twice. Herodot Physical Therapy, and there were many more. So, we had great support, great promotional coverage this year as well. I think that's it.
Yeah, and big events like this are only possible through the efforts of hundreds of volunteers, and again, we did receive positive feedback through social media that it really, truly felt like a community coming together and showcasing the community to participants visiting from outside the area. And I think that includes many of you who served as official starters, handing out finisher medals, our race MC, helping out. I think that was phenomenal. Mr. Mayor, I saw you on Race Expo Day at the high school, and I thought it was, it's truly, as I said, a community event and fun to see you out there, even participating in the 5K and really seeing the city out there having a presence at the event. So, with that, we wanted to give you one of these. It's the commemorative number-one bib from this year's race. And again, we were very honored and pleased to be a part of this year's race and are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
How about questions? Councilor Eisen?
Thank you, Mayor. I, to reiterate the feedback, the online feedback, I was checking a number of, you know, Whidby Island Marathon, Whidby Island Marathon 2017 hashtags on Instagram, and there were some amazing pictures that people had posted, and I did not see a single negative comment. Lots of comments about the hills, but not even, not in a negative way. It was lots of "I'll be back" and a little bit of helpful feedback, but really, nothing negative at all, and it was really fun to scroll through those. So, immediately after, I was really encouraged. And the Run the Bridge thank you ad made me wonder, do we do anything to thank, like the DOT and those that help us close the bridge? Like, do we fall all over ourselves thanking them for helping us make that happen? Because that's kind of a big deal.
Yes, we, Jeff and I both work with Washington State DOT quite a bit, and one of the best things we can do is get off the bridge as quickly as possible. And we've heard that feedback from five, six years ago, and we've made sure every year not to have Washington State DOT send us the video of us still on the bridge timestamp. So, we do that, but we work very closely, obviously, beforehand to make sure we are off that bridge when we promise we will be, and after the race, we always have feedback from them as well as recap, either via phone, email, or in person, and this year, we didn't hear anything negative, so we are counting that as good.
Okay, good. It's important that they, I don't want them to think that it's expected or taken for granted, because I realize that's a major undertaking, so as long as they know that we feel that way, then, good stuff.
I think on that same note, too, we actually go, we communicate with Island County after the race as well, and hold a recap meeting with Island County with Public Works, and I think Jeff and I both say this over and over, but this is one of the best cities and counties to work with because they are so bending over backwards to help to make this a success because they know how important it is, I think, to the community, to the island, to the people here in this area as well.
It's nice to hear. Thank you.
Counselor, yes, Ombert.
Thank you, Mayor. What is the farthest distance that you had a participant come from?
I think when I put together this, I saw people from, I want to say, Europe area. We've actually, we covered, I think it was about seven different countries. Obviously, Canada is the closest country, but we did have a few either from the Ireland, Great Britain area as well. I don't, I can't tell you why.
We can send Nicole a follow-up slide to this that's more fun than anything, but it'll show a U.S. map, and it'll plot every city that a participant came from, and it'll show, you know, each state, the number that we got from different states, or just very comprehensive demographic information based on geography beyond what's in here. We can send that to Nicole to follow up with all of you, because it is kind of interesting to see where people come from.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Muns?
Thank you. I had a lot of comments from citizens saying that everything was well-marked. They knew exactly where the race was going and where to stay out of the way, and kudos to you all and all of the staff. That was a combination of our community, but they thought it was very, very well-run.
Thank you.
And the weather was perfect, wasn't it?
Right until we needed to tear down.
Or maybe a little before that, when the wind came up and blew over the tents, but yes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I'd like to follow up by saying that as long as we've been doing this marathon, it just felt like this one really came together, and I know it was a combination of a lot of hard work on your part, guys, and your company, and also staff. We had a lot of good, good, hard work, so thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Merriman? Okay. We'll move on to our public hearings and meetings, Section 6. To, I'll give you an opportunity to come up and speak about these. We have three items, ordinance-related items, and if you choose to speak, you don't even have to sign in. I'll give you an opportunity. We would like your, to be able to record your comments properly. Ask you to please state your name clearly in the microphone and limit your comments to three minutes per ordinance. And we'll start off with 6A, ordinance number 1763, Puget Sound Energy Franchise Agreement. And we have our city attorney, Nikki Esparsa, here.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This evening, I have the pleasure of presenting ordinance 1763, which grants Puget Sound Energy a franchise to put electric facilities in the public right-of-way. This is a non-exclusive 10-year franchise agreement. I'm sure you've all had the opportunity to review it. Some things of interest to the council in this particular agreement are the undergrounding provisions found in Section 5, which talks about how the city and PSE will cooperate in undergrounding facilities. Also of interest likely to council is Section 14, which talks about co-location of city fiber lines on PSE poles. Otherwise, this is a fairly standard agreement that includes insurance requirements and indemnification provisions, and talks about how the city and PSE communicate with each other regarding location of facilities or relocating facilities, permitting processes. And we do have Emily Hagan here from PSE this evening, if anyone has any questions to ask Ms. Hagan. Otherwise, the staff's recommendation is to approve ordinance 1763, granting PSE a 10-year non-exclusive franchise. And I will take any questions you have after the public hearing.
Okay, so we'll open it up for public comments at this time. Anyone wishing to speak, please come on up. Going once, twice? Okay. How about council? Input, questions? Counselor Servadius?
Thank you, Mayor. On both these, the separability clause, it's interesting. It's a giant paragraph. I pretty much understand what it says. I'll give you the page number here, sorry, for my peers. So, it's 57 of 96, Section 21. It makes sense if you pause and work through all the commas, but what if there was a competitor that comes to town? What is our option to? We would just have another franchise agreement with someone else?
Absolutely. All of the franchises that we have negotiated recently and that we are currently negotiating are non-exclusive, and so we do, we could grant a franchise to another utility.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Muns?
Oh, thank you. I am guessing that the 10 years was...
A compromise.
A compromise, okay.
Yes. PSE, I believe, was asking for 20 or 30, and we agreed on 10.
Okay, because I was concerned that it seemed like in some of our old agreements that technology is faster than we have agreements, and then we lag behind. So, having the flexibility, I think the 10 years is a good thing. Thank you.
Are there comments or questions? How would the council like to proceed? Counselor Ombert?
Thank you, Mayor. I make the motion to approve ordinance 1763, granting Puget Sound Energy a non-exclusive franchise for provisions of electric energy to the citizens of Oak Harbor.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Ombert, second by Muns, to approve ordinance 1763, granting Puget Sound Energy a non-exclusive franchise for provision of electric energy to the citizens of Oak Harbor. Any further questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And we have our next item, number 6B, ordinance number 1797, Cascade Natural Gas Franchise Agreement. Back to our city attorney.
So, here we have another franchise agreement that we have just completed negotiations on. Cascade Natural Gas Franchise Agreement, ordinance number 1797, would also grant a 10-year non-exclusive franchise to Cascade Natural Gas. There are a couple of interesting differences between Cascade and other utilities because they do place gas lines, and so that comes with a little bit of additional risk and exposure. So, Cascade, there are differences in the insurance provisions. We negotiated $25 million in insurance, which, it's my understanding, is one of the highest in the country, if not the highest in the country, and so that's a great thing for the city. There's also environmental protections and environmental insurance involved in this particular franchise. Beyond that, it is a fairly standard franchise agreement that does allow Cascade to place its facilities within the public right-of-way, again for 10 years, and again, non-exclusive. Cascade's representative was not able to be present tonight, but Cascade is fully in support of this particular franchise agreement. It was one that we negotiated at length, so I will take any questions you have after public hearing.
Okay. Open it up for the public hearing. Any comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that and come back to the council. Any questions? Yes, Counselor Ombert.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't say that the first one on the PSE, but thank you for negotiating the 10 years. As you know, I had a conversation about the county's franchise agreement being enforced for 25 years, which is pretty onerous, I think, when you consider things that change. And also for achieving an agreement on 25 millions in liability insurance to protect the city's exposure. I think that that goes without saying, when there's a fairly large event like the one they had in Bellingham here a few years ago, it can be really expensive. So, thank you to you and to the staff who were involved in that.
Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Muns?
So, with PSE, we got the, you dig a ditch, and we want to put in conduit for future. What can we do with the gas line? They're always digging ditches.
Right. So, co-location of other utilities next to a gas line doesn't, the conversations that we've had suggest that it is not advisable to co-locate other utilities with a gas line. Doug and I both remember a conversation with Cascade about the proximity, how far away you have to be from a gas line, and so that wasn't something that we felt comfortable chasing down.
So, there's no provision for...
No, there is not.
And you have no idea how close something could be to it that...
I don't recall the distance at this point, but I, both Doug and I do recall a conversation about co-location of utilities next to gas lines.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Ombert?
Just one comment on that, too, is that PSE does have a standard cross-sectional diagram for common utilities that shows vertical and horizontal offsets that are required by all the developments that have combined utilities, and that's kind of a standard that's been followed for a long time. I don't see any head nodding from the PSE, but I sure remember seeing on an awful lot of plans that this is the way your offsets will be, and it's not negotiable. So, I think there's a safety factor that's built into the standard plans for common utilities.
That was our understanding as well.
Anyone else? Comments? Yes, Counselor Heisen?
I move to approve ordinance 1797.
Second.
We have a motion by Heisen, second by Campbell, to approve ordinance number 1797. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you, Nikki. It sounds like you're a tough negotiator. Thank you. Item number 6C is ordinance number 1798, repealing and replacing Oak Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter 17, or excuse me, 19.75, regarding rezoning. And I see our senior planner, Kat Kamak. Welcome, Kat.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Here to present some code amendments for considering rezoning applications. So, I have a short presentation. I'll go through them and cover the basis for why we're considering these amendments. So, just some background information, before the 2016 comprehensive plan update, our future land use map in the comprehensive... our future land use map in the comprehensive plan was on a one-to-one ratio with the zoning map. Basically, you had as many land use districts as you did zoning districts. So we have 17 land use districts and 17 zoning classifications. And so in order to change a zoning designation, you had to, according to GMA, first go through the comprehensive plan, change the land use, and then come back and change the zoning classification. Now, that process took almost a year. And in some cases, if you really think about it, and you miss the deadline for an application, it could be a year and a half or two. So the process originally was designed to prevent spot zoning, which is basically an isolated zoning classification in the middle of where it shouldn't be. So the thinking process many years ago, when they designed the language, was to try and limit that from happening. So with the 2016 update, however, we changed the land use, future land use map to more of a planning tool, a generalized land use map. And land use designations were reduced from 17 to about eight. And so each land use was, is now implemented by more than one zoning classification. And so I have a little graphic here to kind of show what that looks like. So prior to the update, we had this type of one-to-one ratio where low-density residential translated to R1, single-family zoning district on a zoning map, and so on for all the land use and zoning classifications. After the 2016 update, if my computer's working, we have less number of land use designation. So low-intensity residential land use designation is now implemented by R1, R2, and R3, three zoning classifications. So basically, in order to change from R1 to R2, they don't have to go and change the land use. Now they can use a process that is more streamlined and can request a zoning change just through a regular process. And I'll go through what are regular processes in a little bit. Similarly, we have industrial. Similarly, we have commercial zones. And so changes could be accommodated in a fairly reasonable time. And that's kind of important for economical reasons because we know the market changes, and our community and property owners have different visions for their property. And if there is a demand for a certain change, then the community is able to adapt and accommodate that change in a much quicker fashion. So just to go over what the current language has, the language, again, was designed for map amendments and to align it with comprehensive plan designation. This is our current one. It required some development plans. So if you look at our current language, it says, if you want to have a rezoning application, you've got to put development plans together and have that reviewed. It talked about the process of going through a hearing examiner or city council. It had provisions for conditions and restrictions. The requirement was, if you are considering a rezoning application, then you have to adopt an ordinance, and you have to put in all the conditions and restrictions on the ordinance. It also required the developer to invest a lot of money early in the process, even before they get the zoning into all these development plans. So this was a big drawback. You had to go through the SEPA process. It took a longer time. So there was some challenges with the current code. And with the change in the future land use map and the idea to be able to adapt to market demands a little easier, this process and this language seemed to be limiting. So this is the basis for trying to implement the changes in the future land use map and make our process a little more streamlined. So the proposed new language will replace the existing code. It will keep the process the same for considering rezoning, the hearing examiner, and the city council approval. It's a standard process that's used throughout the state. It's a good process to use for us. So that process is, it retains that process. Simplify the review criteria a little bit. Since we're going, we have a generalized land use map, and we're changing zoning classifications underneath of that, we're generally accepting a wider range of uses for properties. Therefore, we can look at it on a property-by-property basis and determine if a particular zoning classification change will fit within that neighborhood. So the criteria has been designed to kind of look at it kind of at a local basis. And if there are challenges that could be addressed, then there's provisions in the new code to enter into a development agreement where you can work with the property owner and make sure that you can mitigate for any issues. So that's what the new language proposes. So code amendments are type 5 process, type 5 review process, which means they go before the Planning Commission and the city council, a public hearing with both bodies. The Planning Commission conducted a hearing on April 25, and they have recommended approval of the text amendment. Staff recommends that the city council hold the public hearing today, tonight, close the public hearing, and also take action on the item. So I will be happy to answer any questions either now or after the public hearing.
We'll do the public hearing next. Open it up for public comments. Going once, twice? Okay. Seeing none, come back up to the city council. Anybody have any questions? Councilor Almberg.
Thank you. Thank you to the staff for streamlining this. This is awkward, the way it was before, to say the lease about that. But anything we can do to help streamline the process is better for our economy, better for our staff in terms of time investment, and for the customer. Thanks a lot.
Councilor Muntz.
Thank you. Mr. Kamak, on the, it definitely looks so much better and gives more options. Does it give really more options to the hearing examiner also? Because my impression was that they're just looking at what the code is. And if it doesn't fit exactly the code, the answer's going to be no. So why even go to the hearing examiner? So I was just curious about that portion.
In the past, it probably was a little more stricter because you had to meet the same land use requirements. Now that there is a flexibility, the hearing examiner has a little more broader range of criteria to consider the change. So they're not limited as much as the previous process was. So it'll give them a lot more latitude to consider changes.
I think that's all for right now. Thank you.
Councilor Heisen.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Almberg. This makes so much sense that it makes no sense why we did it any other way, now that we're looking at it. So if nobody else has any comments, I'll go ahead. I move to adopt ordinance number 1798, repealing and replacing Oak Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter 19.75.
Second.
So we've got a motion by Heisen, second by Wassinger, to adopt ordinance number 1798, repealing and replacing Oak Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter 19.75. Any other questions or input? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Kat. Okay, I think that completes our public hearings and meetings section. We are on to section number seven, which is ordinances and resolutions. And we have 7A, ordinance number 1804, amending Oak Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter 1.04, entitled council meetings. And we have Dr. Merriman, our city administrator here.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. This agenda bill pertains to a request by council to make an adjustment to our council meeting schedule. This came out of our council retreat discussions we have. So staff has followed up to make this change happen. What we're proposing with this ordinance is shifting our two months in the summertime when we have one council meeting and one workshop later in the month. In previous years, those two months have been July and August. One of the difficulties we've experienced is in the month of June, this is typically when the Association of Washington Cities Conference is held for elected officials. And that always conflicts with our second meeting of the month. And I think for a few years now, we've always been shuffling around and trying to make those meetings work. So what we're proposing now is we're going to shift that two-month window to be June and July. So then the month of June, we'll go from having two meetings to one meeting, that first Tuesday of the month. And then the workshop, I believe, is on the fourth Wednesday of the month. August, then, will change from having one meeting to two, like our regular months have. So the code amendments that we have looked at doing simply reflect that change. There are two different areas in there. One will show, especially in 1.04, 1.010, where we have our time and place of council meetings, it will reflect those changes between months and the number of meetings in those months. So I can answer any questions you might have on that.
Okay, we'll open it up for any input from the public. At this time, seeing none, we'll come back to council. Any questions or input? Yes, Councilor Servadius.
Is this going to change what month we wear ties?
I sure hope so.
Anyone got a motion? Or yes, Councilor Almberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adopt ordinance 1804, amending the OHMC, Chapter 1.04, entitled council meetings.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Almberg, second by Muntz, to adopt ordinance 1804, amending OHMC, Chapter 1.04, entitled council meetings. Any other questions, input? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Boy, we're on a roll tonight. Passing unanimously. And we are down to our last item on our agenda, which is Section 10, under reports and discussion items, our finance department first quarter financials and stability fund. And we have our administrator from our finance department, Patricia Soule. Patricia.
Thank you, Mayor. This is going to be the first quarter report for 2017. It's going to be based off of the documents that were included in your packets. So I'll start with the stability fund, and then I'll go into the financials, go into the cash flow, and then the investments. The stability fund was set by ordinance 1630 on 7/3 of 2012. The balance was to be the greater of 3 million or 25% of prior year general fund revenues. Last year's stability balance, based off of the 2015 revenues, was 3,398,100. This year, the end of the year, we did a calculation at our revenues in 2016 were 14,545. 25% of those came to 3,636,312. So we increased the stability fund by 238,212. That transfer came from the general fund. That means that that, those funds are now in Fund OO2, current expense reserves. That fund contains the stability fund that is governed by council. Nothing can be removed from there without council action. And it has also the fire fees of 20,600. So when you look at that fund's cash total at 331, the balance is 3,656,912. Any questions on stability fund? Okay. The first quarter financials from January 1 through March 31. I wanted to start with page two of your packet. From me, has a list of all of the funds with the beginning cash, the revenue budget, revenues, expenditure budget, expenditures, and then the ending cash. To make it easier to do a look at it via graphs, I summarized general fund into the OO1 through OO6, the internal service funds, 501 through 510, proprietary funds, including the reserves, 401 through 420. I broke out the wastewater treatment plant project, as well as the windjammer project, because those are both key projects that we're paying attention to here at the city. The other funds are 101 through 320 are combined. And then the cash and investments, which is a negative number. That negative number is just indicating what we've actually taken out of cash and unreserved cash and moved to investments through the state pool and our bonding. So the bottom total actually ties to our bank statement balances. So we'll start with the citywide revenues. The citywide revenue budget versus actual, I broke it between those categories that I indicated. It just shows, of course, the largest budget for the city is the clean water facility. Next largest is proprietary funds, and then general fund comes in next. This slide will actually compare 2016 versus 2017 first quarter, just to kind of show you the flows. If you look at the first columns there, which are for general fund, the reason the general fund revenues are greater in 2016 than 17 is we had the local loan proceeds come through in the first quarter at 483,000. So that was the anomaly there. The other anomaly in 2017, if you look at the other funds for 17 are significantly greater. We have some transfers that I'll go through in detail. This year, the approach for finances that we're transferring, the full amount of the budgeted transfer if the projects are going to occur. Prior years, it had been budgeted to transfer monthly. To me and my decision, much cleaner to see the full transfer than the funds are sitting there available to use for the capital projects that we've decided to do. So if you look at citywide revenue collected percent of the year versus percent received, you'll see the ones that stand out. So Windjammer Park shows that we've collected 100% of what we budgeted. We fully budgeted transfers. So we budgeted excess sales tax transfers for 2006 as 629,986. That came out of general fund. And then 285,588 that we had put into Fund OO2 to be able to transfer into that project when it got started. And then Clean Water Facility also transferred in 450. So we have a total of 1,365,574 that's been transferred in to the Windjammer Park for fiscal year 17. And then the other thing that was in the other funds, Senior Center, we fully transferred what we showed as necessary funds to support the operations of that fund, of 174,253. So that's fully been transferred into that fund.
Yes, Councilor Servadius.
If you could go back, please. So the, one more time, the Clean Water Facility, the 450,000, what was that from?
That came from the Clean Water Facility for the mitigation piece of the Windjammer Park. So that was part of our budgeted transfers. So we went ahead and did that transfer. So the citywide expenditures, again, the expected expenditures for Clean Water Facility surpassed. We're looking this year and next year as our large construction years. So of course, it's going to be the largest. And then the rest of them don't stand out quite as much. When you look at the expenditure comparison, our outgoing general fund expenditures are greater, again, because we transferred out of general fund in full instead of month by month. And then the other funds, the same thing with the Senior Center. Clean Water Facility is greater than the prior year. So, and that's because they're stepping up the construction. If you look at percent of year versus percent of spent, again, the main one that stands out that's above what the percent of year is, is the general fund. And that's due to us transferring out in full versus monthly. Any questions on citywide before I go into general fund? Okay. So general fund budget versus year-to-date collected. If you look at the first column, property tax, we don't receive property taxes until May or November. That also affects our cash flow. When we get it in May, it makes it look really pretty. Until May, it doesn't look so pretty. So that was the main thing that stood out in that slide. And then if you go to the percent of year versus percent spent, there's some ones that I can point out here. Under licenses and permits, the cable franchise fees this year collected, 66% of what we anticipated to collect in that line, 158,47, compared to 63,837 in prior year. The building permits were higher, and we determined that was because of a Clean Water Facility permit for the admin and maintenance building of 40,215. Under the other revenue column, we had transfers in from the OO2 fund, 61,200 for the feasibility study for fire. That funding came from the fire fees. So we moved that funding into general fund where the expenditure occurred last year, but we moved it in this year. And then the utility remodel, we've moved in 17,204 from the utility funds for that remodel.
Councilor Servadius.
Thank you. The cable franchise fee... Thank you. The cable franchise fees, is that a hyphen or is that a decrease of 66%?
I'm sorry, it's a hyphen.
Okay.
I'll put a space next time. Sorry about that.
Could you, could you explain that one more time?
The franchise fees, we've collected 66% of our budgeted franchise fees in the first quarter. So we've collected 158,147 of franchise fees versus $63,000 that we collected in prior years. So we had a significant amount collected, more than you would anticipate at this point.
Why is that?
Basically, due to Comcast. They paid their franchise fees.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So then the general fund expenditures, annual budget versus year-to-date, the main one that'll stick out to you here is the transfers out. We've pretty much fully transferred out due to the methodology that we're employing this year of moving it into the funds for use there. If you look at this slide, general fund percent of year to percent spent, it highlights that very well. The Windjammer Park, we transferred out 629,986. And the Senior Center, we transferred out 174,253. Any questions on that before I move on?
Yes, Mayor Proton.
I've got a question about, I think you answered my, what I was going to ask you about the property taxes, that city received them right after March 31.
But the-
It's a negative amount of $33,000.
The state actually, or the county actually doesn't send us our taxes until May and November. So currently, the $33,000 negative must be when they tried to collect, I'm guessing. And then there was an adjustment from last year's levy. And I'm not sure if that happened. And I don't know the detail on when that happened, but I think that was part of it. But it's also due to when they collect from people, whether or not they've paid, and they'll take it back from us if-
The other one also in comparison, what the city received for the first quarter in 2016 compared to 2017 is the other revenues. There's a negative amount of 342.
Where is that at?
On page 88.
Oh. I just numbered them for myself, so.
On the agenda bill.
Right. Are you talking other revenues?
Other revenues and the revenue of general fund.
Okay, so general fund.
Comparison between 2016, 2017, the difference of 342,000.
Okay, here we are. 342,000. Yes, that will be, did I already pass that one? The revenues were the, was that the local loan? Yeah, the local loan of $438,000 that was received in '16 made the difference.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Questions at this time? Okay?
All right. So then the cash and investments. This is a snapshot of what you guys get from our monthly reports. This, oops, that was not what I meant to do. Okay. Is it the top button that turns the red light on? Okay. So, there we go. These two make up the total cash balance. And then the negative number on the cash report are the bottom two. Technical difficulties. So the $18,00318 and the $22,147 are what make up that in the column for 331 of 17, the negative number on the report that has the cash balance by fund. Those are what's being invested into investments, not sitting just in cash. I did a 12-month graph just to take a look at how our funds are doing cash-wise. As you see, from April to May, we had a significant spike, and that was due to the bond issue of $25,700 we received in May of '16. It shows, when you look at this, that we're using the SRF loans to fund the Clean Water Facility. Those funds from the bond are still sitting there, waiting for expenses that would not qualify for the SRF loan. So it looked pretty good.
I'm sorry, Counselor Hyzen.
Could you clarify the bond issue, $25,000 or $25 million?
Million, sorry. Just making sure I heard that. You know, $25 million, sorry. Few zeros were missing. Then if you look at our portfolio for our investments, we have 53% of our investments in federal agency bonds. Those are invested through the city. We make those decisions. And then our local government investment pool is 44% of our total investments. The rest is sitting in public fund money market at 3% of the total investments. And then the final slide just shows how we're laddering our investments. So these things, this amount comes due each quarter, that we then have the ability to reinvest at hopefully higher interest rates, better yields for the city. And that concludes. Any questions?
Counselor Almberg.
Thank you. Could you go back about six slides? There's one number that just cut my eye when I was adding them up. Keep going. It wasn't in the graphs, the last one that you had actually-
The cash one?
Yeah, matrix. Go to the cash one. That one right there.
Okay.
The sum of unrestricted and restricted appears to be the same number as our ending balance for-
Yes.
March 31. And can you explain why? Make it simple for me.
From the way we presented, the investments, the negative number, is what we actually invest outside of the city. So it's not funds sitting in our bank account.
Okay.
And so this ties to our bank balance that we have at the city. But we truly have, when you count the investments, the 81 million. Does that make sense?
Yep, it does. All right. Thank you.
Other questions? Any questions from the public? Lot of numbers. Anything else?
Nope.
I have a question.
Okay.
The very first, the very first part of your discussion talked about our stabilization fund.
Yes.
I'm guessing at some point in time, this council may decide they want to either stop doing that or spend part of that. In the event they decide they want to, could you talk about the process?
From what I understand, the process, and Doug might need to chime in with his experience, but I believe that we need to bring something forward to council to get council approval. So we would be guided as to what you would like us to bring forward. And then you, as a council, would need to say, yes, that's what you would like to do with it. It has to be approved by council. We can't do any action on it without your approval.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Counselor Almberg.
On that topic, I would hope that we would leave that in place until after we get through the Clean Water Facility project. There's still a lot of exposure on that, or potential exposure, and with the Windjammer Park upgrades and stuff like that. That's just my comment. Thank you.
Anyone else got anything? Any, thank you very much, Patricia. Very nice job.
Thank you.
So seeing no other business, we are adjourned.